You guys' video is going to come up pretty quick. I don't want to have to be a witness.
It is.
Never heard of them back.
Not yet, but they're going to flip it on and they won't tell you.
Ty Lucas, good to see you.
Who's that? Who's that guy?
He looks familiar.
Well, maybe you died and went to heaven or something.
Well, not yet.
That's a good thing.
No.
I don't know. Your heaven's pretty nice. That's what I read anyway.
I guess you were working when I was.
Yeah. Fives are, I got a brush to get by five. I made it. I made it.
Maybe we need to move the city council meetings to five. That way Mark and Ed will be on time all the time.
Oh, I don't count on that. You didn't think your guys were going to get away with that, did you?
No.
Open.
Good thing we have an empty chamber.
Yeah.
We still did need that though.
That's true.
That's true.
And Terry, to some extent.
I can do that.
It's over here.
Terry? Okay. Thank you, Renee. Okay, according to our clock in the back, it is now five o'clock. So we have a current copy of the Open Meetings Act of Nebraska as posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. This is a mayor and council work session here Tuesday, June 1st, 2021 at 5:00 PM. There will be no formal vote or action taken during this meeting. I repeat, no formal vote or action taken during this meeting. This is information only. Public is welcome to listen to us talk, but may not address the group. Calling the meeting to order right now. We have a roll call, please.
Miss Lee?
Here.
Trail?
Here.
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 Garrett?
Here.
Common?
Here.
Recur?
Here.
Here.
Okay, our only agenda item tonight is presentation by Marcy Luth. Okay, got it right. There we go. Avamquist, Maltson, Galloway, and Luth, PC, on the 2020 City of North Platte Audit. Don may chime in here as needed. Marcy, it's all yours. You've got about 27 minutes.
Super, super. Well, thank you. Thank you for having me here. And we just wanted to run through the audit report and our benchmarking spreadsheet. And tonight I'm going to start out and focus with that benchmarking spreadsheet because it does refer back to the pages on the audit report. And then I'll point a few things out specifically on the audit report itself. But, you know, that gets to be about 100 pages and a lot of numbers. So we always feel this two-page spreadsheet that gives you some statistics, some comparisons to other cities your size is very useful. And we always start out by reminding you, there are reasons why you, as City of North Platte, will differ from your other peer group communities. You know, there are priorities that you guys set. There are differences between the communities, but I think it's useful to use that. This benchmarking spreadsheet also provides a five-year comparison for the city, so you can see how your numbers have trended over the last five years. And I think that's always very useful as well. So just wanted to get started in this. This is a comparison of 12 cities that are your size from across the state of Nebraska. And so we use the information off of their audit reports as well to pull this information. But starting out there, you can see your valuation per capita is a little bit less than that peer group average. You guys came in at 64,000 per capita compared to a peer group average of about 69,000. So that's going to impact things like your property tax levy and the amount of property taxes that you raise. The first item there, we look at unrestricted net position compared to total net position. And as a rule, we usually say that somewhere between 25 and 30% is good, depending upon whether it's governmental or business type, your utility funds. You can see that for 2020, your government-wide ended up about 32%, so you're a little bit ahead of the recommended number, which is good. Your governmental ended up about 29%, running a little bit ahead of that recommended number. And then business type came in at 35. So you're right there. You're a little bit ahead of where we would say the minimum that you want to have as far as that unrestricted net, excuse me, position is. And you can see trend-wise that you've been pretty consistent, a little bit of an improvement as you run through there. The second item there, we have your top five sources of revenue for the governmental activities. And here, again, as you look back five years, you can see very consistent as far as the revenue compared to prior years. As we compare to your peer group, the recommended is actually the peer group average. You can see sales tax runs a bit below the peer group. Meanwhile, your property taxes runs a bit above the peer group average. Grants, you guys haven't had some, the large street grants and some of those things the last several years. That's going to vary in communities depending on whether they've had a major utility project. If there was a big water or wastewater project, that can really cause those grant revenues to go up. You guys haven't had a lot in that department, you know, some CDBG projects over the last few years, but there's not been major, major utility projects. So you've been running behind the peer group average there. State allocation, you can see you're right in line with your peer group. And then charges for services, you guys run ahead of the peer group average, which indicates the city has a lot of things that you provide. Probably more than some of those other average cities as far as the parks and recreation and pools and some of those things that generate the charges for services. So you have more dollars coming in on a per capita basis in that category.
Excuse me?
Yes.
What communities are we being compared to?
Well, it's the, it's communities like Hastings and Norfolk and Fremont. And let me think. It's over 10,000 in population. Grand Island's in that number. So there are some that are much larger than you, but it's over 10,000 in population. The majority of them run right in that 20,000 range as far as average number.
So would it be fair to say that most of these are probably, say, from Carney East at least?
Yeah, that's where you see the larger community. So a lot of them are east of here.
Which means that they would have a larger population within their trade area than we would have.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. And that's going to push sales tax, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Marcy?
Yes.
Along the same lines, when we're comparing to the peers, do the peers have all of the same, for example, environment and leisure services that we have here? Does, do all of the peers have a senior center, recreation center?
No, they don't have the same services. For instance, Grand Island Senior Center is not a city-generated. The city kicks in a little bit in support, but it doesn't tie in the same way that the City of North Platte does. So they're not always 100% apples to apples, but we try to get the best comparisons that we can in those peer group averages. But that's why you can't say, hey, this is right and this is wrong, or we should be this number compared to our peer group. We just have to take it, you know, and just in generalization. Okay? Great question. Yes.
Do the charges for services also take into consideration the cost it takes to provide those, or those just net revenue?
No, this is, this is just revenue on this particular, particular sheet. Yep.
So I think you mentioned in your comments, parks and recreation areas, do some of these communities actually charge for the use of their parks?
No, not for the use of the parks itself, but, you know, campgrounds, things like that, yes. But generally, it's more the pool and recreation centers, things like that, that are generating the charges for services.
Thank you.
Yep.
Marcy, where, where do, does electricity, sewer water sit outside of this comparison on that?
It does. On the top revenue, it does. This is the governmental side only. We'll have a little bit more on the utilities on the second page.
But trash probably sits on this side, then?
It does. It does. Yep. Yep. And in a lot of communities, you know, the trash is going to be private contracted. So trash does drive that because it's in your governmental side at the city. Great point. Okay, so then we're getting down to the third item here, which is your state allocations. And you can see that on highway allocation, you guys are right in line with peer group average, and you've been very consistent in all these over the last five years. Municipal equalization, you guys run below your peer group average, and that's simply your general fund tax levy is below the statewide average. So you don't receive the maximum municipal equalization. You receive less than maximum. You guys are at about a 29 cent levy for the general fund, and if that gets up to, in that lower 30 range, you're probably going to enhance your municipal equalization. But it's really the function of you've got less property tax, and so the state says, well, we're not going to give you as much municipal equalization as a result. And it's a formula that all communities are faced with. Item number four, we've got your governmental expenses. Now we're on the expense side of things on a per capita basis. And here you can see that your general government, the administrative side, runs less than the peer group average. And again, if you look back over the five years, you can see that's been very consistent as far as the expenditures per person. Public safety, you run a bit ahead of the peer group average, and that's going to be driven a bit just due to your population. You have to have a certain force, and if you're on the lower end of this peer group average population, that's going to drive that cost per person up, of course. Public work, same thing. To have that department, if you're on the lower end of the population, that's going to drive that up because you're running a bit ahead of the peer group average. And then environment and leisure, you can see that you're running ahead of the peer group average in those categories as well. So all of those things are going to be driven a bit by having been in the smaller end of that population of your peer group. Your general outstanding debt compared to your valuation, we say anything less than 3% is excellent. You guys had about 1.2% outstanding at the end of September, so you were in excellent shape as far as being able to service your governmental debt. Unassigned fund balance compared to your general fund expenditures, you know, we'd recommend having about 25% of your annual general fund expenditures in unassigned fund balance. The city has no unassigned fund balance, and so that's an area that we have talked about in the past, but an area that we want to focus on trying to build over time and building that unassigned up. So you have those reserves available for flexibility and being able to respond to projects as they might come up. Item number seven, your month's expense in street cash reserve. You can see you've built up to about 31 months. Now that's going to vary from year to year depending upon what projects you have. You can see four years ago, you would wipe that down to zero, and when you have a big project, that's going to use that cash and you'll start back over and building that up. Over time, you'd like to average out to about 12 months, but that's going to ebb and flow as your projects go. Number eight there is your levy rates, and here you can see the general fund levies at that 0.297. That's what I mentioned, is a bit below the state average. And that's why your municipal equalization is less than some of your peer groups. But you can see by the time you add in your debt service and your airport levies, you're at about 0.53. And so that runs at least consistently or a little bit ahead because you've got the airport in there where some of the communities do not have that running through the city's levy. Item number nine, we've got your net depreciable capital assets compared to original cost. What this is trying to tell us is how depreciated are your assets? You know, we'd like to see your net depreciable basis be at least 35% or greater because that indicates we don't have major, major replacements pending. You can see for the governmental, you're right there at that 35% level, right at 34. For the utility side of things, business type, you're at about 45%, so you've still got a little bit of room before major replacements. But something to keep our eye on because we know that's going to require some cash when we get our assets depreciated down to that level. Item number 10 is your operating income. This is on the utility funds. And so here, we usually target about 15% for most of those, the Internal Service Fund, a bit lighter. You can see that your electric was coming in at about 7%. The others are fairly close to that 15% target, but something to keep our eye on, you know, where are your rates? Does this indicate it may be time to look at that electric for potential rate increases? Because we know we have to generate at least 15% operating margin in order to have the cash reserves for replacements. And so something just to watch and monitor as you build your rates. Item number 11, your debt coverage ratio. Here, we target about one and a half. Now, your electric has a very high debt coverage ratio. It doesn't have a lot of debt. And so the very little debt that it has, it comes in at 20 times coverage. So it's in very good shape, but it's simply a function of having little debt. The other funds are right in line with that one and a half. They're right where we would want them to be. And then the final ratio we have on here is cash reserves. So here we're looking at what would we say is a good cash reserve to have? And for the governmental side of things, based on your annual expenditures as well as upcoming capital replacements, about $9 million is what would be a comfortable unrestricted cash reserve balance to have. And you can see, we don't have any unrestricted cash reserves in the general fund. Now, subsequent to year-end, you guys did receive $2.2 million from CARES Act for the police presumptive payroll grant that was related to COVID. So that came in in December. That had been spent prior to year-end. You guys are modified cash basis, so this does not include that as a receivable, but that cash did come in in December. So that helped your cash reserves. You also, just in the last month or so, issued some bonds in the assessment funds. So the assessment funds at September 30th of last year had about $10 million of warrants. You issued $6 million of bonds, which generated cash and revenue in May of this year. And then you also transferred some dollars across from the sewer fund for some infrastructure that had been put in in the last couple of years and paid for as part of the project out of the assessment fund. So that put $10 million back into the governmental side of things when the bonds were issued and the sewer fund paid for their infrastructure. So that all helped improve the governmental cash reserves at that point. Now, you can see on the utility side of things, if our recommendation's about $25 million, you guys are in good shape. You had about $30 million of cash reserves on the utility side of things. But it's always that governmental that is tough in all communities to generate the revenue, to really build that up. But I know something that you guys have as a goal, to build those cash reserves up. And I think Don and I talked a little bit, and I think she's been talking with Matt as well, about this year's budget process and wanting to make sure that we're building that cash reserve in there for the future. Another question that Don and I've talked about relating to the budget, and I'm going to get off track for just a bit, and then I'll come back to the audit report. But a lot of communities have questions regarding their restricted funds authority. And so when you budget, you guys always take an automatic 2.5% increase to your restricted funds authority. And that is simply, restricted funds is things like property taxes, your in lieu of tax, your state allocation money, sales tax. Those the state consider restricted funds, and there's a limit on how much tax a city can receive through restricted funds in a given year. And wherever that benchmark was set, there was a, there was a ceiling put in place years ago before my time, but they let you increase it 2.5% a year. During your budget process, the council can elect to increase that an additional 1%. They just have to vote, majority vote, to increase that an additional 1%. It does not mean you're raising taxes when you do that. It simply gives you more room under that restricted funds authority. And someone may say, well, why do we care? You know, we have some room right now in restricted funds authority. But if you would have significant increase in sales tax, or if there would be a new tax, if in lieu of taxes went up, you know, a lot of times we see communities that have a large increase in sales tax, and all of a sudden, they have to lower their property tax asking because they now are in conflict with their restricted funds authority. And so we recommend just best practice to always take advantage of that additional 1% increase in your restricted funds authority. It just gives you room for the future. It doesn't say you're raising property tax. It simply gives you that flexibility and builds it for the future. You know, we want that restricted funds authority to be as large as possible, to give you flexibility in case there would be a new revenue source or in case the state would change the rules as far as what they're calculating for restricted funds. A little bit confusing, but I wanted to throw that out there just as you guys will be getting into the budget process in the next month or so, so.
Excuse me, can you clarify what, what restricted-use funds can be used for?
It's really, it's really two different things. This is not restricted funds as far as your audit report. So if, if we look at your audit report, there are several restricted fund balances on there, things that can only be used for streets or maybe only used for federal projects. This is, it uses the same terminology, but it's a totally different thing. It is simply saying, this is restricted tax dollars. And, and the restriction is how much can you bring in to your budget? So that's the restriction, not how it can be spent, but simply governmental restricted tax dollars. And they put a cap because they don't want cities to increase their taxes above a certain level. And so that's what the restriction is, not on the expenditure side, but on the levying of tax.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. You bet. Okay, so from there, I was just going to jump back into the bound audit report. I think a lot of you guys have that. But just in highlight, we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is always what you want when you go through an audit. So that's the opinion that's reflected on page three of this report. So that's always your goal. Don and her crew did an awesome job. It was a little bit of a unique year, of course, with COVID. We did everything remotely this year. And I know that put some additional burden on your staff to get us the information. But with the electronic filing and some of the things that we could access, we got through it all right. But, but thank you to Don and everyone because that, it was something that we weren't going to cut any corners. So it did take a little bit of extra effort on their part, probably a little more than a little bit of extra effort, right, Don? But from there, I want to jump into the audit report itself, and I do want to point out a couple of comparisons. Page nine of the audit report, you know, this usually just provides September 30th of 2020 information. But page nine presents a comparison to the prior year for both revenues and expenses. And I think as we look at this for the governmental side of things, we can see that the expenses were very comparable year over year. The revenue differed. We had about $1 million less revenue this year, and it was charges for services. That made sense, you know? Things were closed. We didn't bring in the same charges for services on the governmental side, and that's what's reflected through here. The bottom of that page, your total revenue, shows that we had, I'm just checking how we're doing for time. We are, we're in good shape so far. Okay. This shows that the revenue, the difference was transfers. This year, you guys had a large transfer come across from the utility fund to shore up some of your cash reserves and eliminate some deficit fund balances, where the prior year shows that transfer for the infrastructure that the assessment funds paid for for the utilities. The same is true comparison-wise on page 10. We can see revenue for the utilities, very similar. Expenses were very similar. The only difference really being in those transfers compared to the prior year. Okay? The major capital asset activity, and you guys have a lot from year to year, is shown on page 11, continuing on to page 12. But I think the main thing for capital assets, we see on page 12, if you compare the net capital that's shown there, you've got 100 million. Compared to the prior year, you're at 100 million. So your replacement of capital assets offset your depreciation. You held pretty even this year on both governmental and utilities as far as purchases and depreciation. The debt, shown at the bottom of page 12, shows a decrease of about $4 million in debt for the city compared to the prior year. So a decrease of about 10.8%. So that's great, continuing to pay down as scheduled on that. From there, I wanted to jump back to page 16. And here, I think it's always good to remember that we've got cash on your governmental funds of about 18.8 million, or assets primarily cash. If we look down at the fund balance, we can see that some of that is non-spendable. It's endowed for your New Bern Fund. There are several that are restricted. It can only be used for these various purposes that are listed here. And then it gets down to assigned and unassigned. And so that unassigned is what we want to build up. Now, keep in mind, if you look at that assessment column, when you guys issued those bonds in May, when the sewer fund transferred their dollars across to pay for infrastructure, that shored that piece of it up. So there were a lot of things that happened subsequent to year-end that improved those net asset balances, fund balances, and cash reserves. From there, I want to jump you back to page 22 with your utility funds. I think it's always good to look at the cash flow from your utilities. And what we see is, if we look at the total column, you brought in 7.4 million from operating your utilities. You used 3.5 million this year in transfers back across to the governmental side. You also used 6.3 million, primarily capital asset purchases of 4 million, and then debt paydown of 1.8 million. And then you had a positive 4.2 million coming in from liquidating CDs. You moved CDs across to cash, and that basically paid for those capital expenditures. Going to just point a couple more things out that in the footnotes, we've got restricted cash is shown on page 46. So your governmental funds, out of all the cash, had about 11 million that was restricted. The various purposes are listed there. The utilities had about 6 million of restricted cash. Most of that is debt service that is restricted for. There's a small bid, about $300,000 for customer deposits. Capital assets shown on page 47, if you look at that addition column, that's what I was mentioning, your replacement and your depreciation, very even. Same thing is true on the utilities on page 49. And then the debt is shown starting on page 50. So you've got the detail of all the debt and that paydown that we mentioned earlier. Also, just a couple of things to point out. We're going to jump through some of those footnotes. Some commitments that you had on page 64 show some contractual commitments that were in place at year-end. You had signed commitments, had not paid for all of those projects, so those are listed there. And then the TIF projects are shown over on page 71. So you received about $239,000 of TIF dollars this year. The four projects that those relate to are listed there. And then subsequent events, I think it's always good to look at the things that happened after year-end, but before the audit report was issued. And that third paragraph under the subsequent events on page 71 mentions that 2.2 million that came in from the CARES Act. That was big cash flow that rolled in after year-end. From there, we just have some additional detail of those non-major funds. I'm going to jump us back to page 79. You did have a single audit this year, which simply means that you spent more than $750,000 of federal expenditures. The big one was that 2.1 million of police presumptive payroll. That counted as federal expenditures. That was the program that we did the additional testing for the single audit requirements, and everything came out clean. There were no findings to report under the single audit. So that was all good. And that really is a quick run-through of about 100-page audit report. It might not have seemed quick to you, but I was talking as fast as I could. Recommendation-wise, this year, I think we had eight recommendations. That was down about five from the prior year. So, you know, we appreciate that you guys look at those things and that you address them. Sometimes they're just recommendations, and you guys may say, hey, we're going to pass, but we like to throw them out there and give you guys that information. That was issued in a separate letter along with our audit adjustments that we proposed. But yeah, things went very smooth for doing a remote audit. I think it, it went smooth all in all. I'm going to flip it back to you guys while we still have about five minutes for questions and see if you guys have any questions I can address. Yes?
So on the, on the COVID money that you spoke of, the audit report, other than the subsequent events, would basically be like it didn't happen, right?
The expenditures are in there. The expenses are in the public safety category. Yes, yes. But you guys are modified cash basis, so there is no receivable recorded, no revenue reflected.
Okay.
It's only in the subsequent event that says that came in. It's only in the subsequent event that says that came in.
Okay, so no removal of the expenses then either, right?
Correct. Correct. The expenses are in there, and that's why when that cash did come in in December, it immediately impacts your cash reserves because it's revenue and cash.
What's your general opinion on our, especially with interest rates being lower with our low debt position, but also low cash position? Do you have thoughts on whether the city should consider being more aggressive or whether we're on a good track with that?
Yeah, the, the tough thing with the interest rates is, you know, we would have, we would have argued years ago that now's the time to do it. Those interest rates are going up. So, I think the communities are trying to take advantage of these low rates while we have them. And, and I guess, you know, we, we don't want to be too greedy and wait too long before those rates start to rise. I know you guys did that issue to take care of your warrants, but I think, yeah, just important to stay on top of that and make sure that as you're doing those projects, if you have a significant project come up, that we're bonding that, you know, on a regular basis to take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate you being here tonight.
Absolutely.
We will call the work session adjourned about two minutes before the next meeting starts.